Welcome, everybody, to our regularly scheduled city council meeting dated September 13, 2021. At this time, I'd like to call our meeting order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I want to welcome everybody to our regular meeting for tonight, and I'd like to welcome the people that are here. Mr. Huntington, thank you for coming tonight. At this time, I would like to entertain any motions to approve the agenda for tonight.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Crowman, thank you, Mr. Schleter. Any discussion, any comments, concerns? Otherwise, we'll take a vote, all those in favor.
Hi.
Anybody opposed? The eyes have it. Approval of the agenda has passed. Moving on to consent agenda, all items on the consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. The items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. At this time, I would like to ask our city administrator, Mr. Krugel, can you hear us okay?
Yes, sir, Mayor Kirby, I can hear you. Can you guys hear me all right?
We hear you just fine. I would appreciate it if you want to give us a little bit of a summary over these consent agenda items.
Yeah, thank you very much. We have a series of items on the consent agenda tonight. We have the meeting minutes from August 23rd. We have dispersment approvals through September 13th, 2021. Those totaled just under $2.2 million. Couple items you'll see are that are included in the consent agenda is the payment to Pember companies for $255,000. Landmark structures for that water tower project for $812,000. And then our MMPA purchased power bill this month was $728,000. We have the airport CIP recommendation. So this is something that was recommended to the city council by the Airport Commission for Approval. We have that first pay request from WW Blacktopping. That was for that 2021 street maintenance project. We have that pay application number four to landmark structures for the water tower. Pay application number four for Pember for the Main Street project. We have the municipal well number eight, Public Facilities Authority authorizing resolution. That's to secure the funding for the well number eight project. We have a water service truck order purchase approval, so CIP item for the water division, replacing a vehicle for them. Personnel actions, we have, we applied for and received an AmeriCorps intern. And what that will, what that individual will be doing is working with the city to inventory trees, boulevard trees, public trees and parks, things of that nature. And then coming up with an assessment as far as health goes, really with the idea of trying to figure out how many ash trees we have in the community, proactively trying to come up with an Emerald Ash Board plan to help address that likely need in the future to handle some of those ash tree things that we have going on around the community. So we have an RPAC appointee. We received an application from Thomas Mercer. And then we have city facility operating hours. And really what that is, is if you're familiar with, with the way that we've had our hours over the summer for the past, I think, three years, really what we're doing is we're just extending those annually. And what that really is, and one thing that you will notice that changes with this is that we're actually going to be opened up an hour earlier. So we'll start opening on at 7:30 and open till four, Monday through Thursday. And then on Fridays, we would open at 7:30 and close at 12:30. So kind of an extension of our summer hours that we currently have right now or currently had. But with the idea that we're going to open an hour earlier to hopefully accommodate some, some people that are leaving for work and want to stop by and visit us. So that's all I have for the consent agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krugel. That was very thorough. Anybody have any questions, concerns or comments about the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I do. Jasper, if you could answer a few questions, I think it would help people in the community and our council understand at least two items that are on the dispersments or the expenditures. The first would be the demolition of the bathroom facility, or if that's the right term, at Park, at River Park. And the other would be the shelter at the dog park. And if you would, in those, address how much of that money is actually coming from us? Or we also have some grants or other ability to pay for those. I think we need to make that pretty clear. If you would, please.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Crowman. So the first one I'll talk about is the bathroom facility, I'll call it, that was at River Park that has recently been demoed. That was part of a FEMA grant or FEMA kind of flood mitigation project that we had. And really, that facility flooded every year that I've been here, except for this year. And every time it floods, building code requires us to replace the electrical in there. And really, it became so dilapidated that we just didn't, we haven't been open, we haven't been opening it up for use. And what we've been doing is bringing in handicap porta potties into the park in lieu of that. So that structure was in the flood plain and we did receive, or we will receive FEMA money for that demo of that project or of that facility. So we have, we have to pay for it upfront, but we will get reimbursed for that. The second thing is the shade structure for the dog park. And really what this was is a grant that we received from the United Fund of La Sure, totaling, totaling just over $15,000. That'll cover most of the cost of that. The city's, the city's contribution for that is about 1,800. We hope to get that installed this fall, but likely with some of the supply chain issues that we've seen with shipping and things of that nature, likely we'll have it installed by the springtime for next summer, next spring, next summer usage. So great deal, United Fund of La Sure, we will definitely give them props for this, you know, and likely have a formal event next year or possibly this fall if we can, if we can receive the item and get it installed in time. But yeah, it's mostly covered through a grant. So that'll be a great thing. That's something that's been brought up numerous times by, by some of the dog park users in the summer. It gets pretty hot out there in the direct sunlight. So this is a, this is a 28 by 40 foot shade structure, so fairly large.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, I would entertain any motions to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Swanberg.
Second.
Mr. Lozey, thank you. Any questions, concerns, comments? Otherwise, we'll vote, all those in favor. Anybody opposed? The eyes have it. Moving on to public comment. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Persons wishing to make a comment will sign up in advance of the meeting on the sheet provided and identify themselves by providing their name and their address. I don't believe we have anybody on the sheet. Thank you. So with that said, we can move along to the regular agenda, if we may. The first item on the regular agenda is the 2022 preliminary levy adoption. It's regular agenda item six A. Mr. Krugel, I'll refer to you first, and if you want to pull Mr. Robian, our finance director, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kirby. That's exactly what I'm going to do as this is, this is Joe's first budget with the city. And he's done a, done a great job kind of getting his head wrapped around all the different moving parts. And, you know, one of the things I'll just kind of briefly talk about is, is the Personnel and Budget Committee. I mean, they've definitely put their time in this year. I believe we've had 10 meetings just on the budget alone so far. So pretty good stuff. You know, there's a lot of, lot of information to digest here. And one thing to keep in mind is that this is the preliminary levy. This is the top end, and we can always bring it back from there. And that's what we always try to do. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joe and he can kind of go. And I'll be here to add any information that maybe needed or questions that anybody may have.
Thanks, Jasper. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. At any point, if you have questions as we walk through this, please feel free to jump in. I'll start off with a quick summary. So as some of you know, or maybe all of you know, the budget process is almost a year-long process. You know, I, I would say that even now, we've, as part of our 2022 budget conversations, we've already, you know, dipped our toe into 2023, trying to look forward and to, to what might come a year from now and what conversations we might be having in the next year. And, and as Jasper mentioned, the Personnel and Budget Committee has been heavily involved in this meeting a number of times. That number of internal meetings with staff to parse everything out in the budget, which is complex. But I hope that the summary that we've prepared tonight adequately answers any questions that the council may have. So just from a process standpoint, the city is required to submit to La Sure County by September 30th, a preliminary levy. And as Jasper alluded to, this preliminary levy is what will go out on preliminary tax statements to taxpayers later this year, usually in November timeframe. And whatever we submit as our preliminary levy for 2022, when it comes time for the final levy, which will be approved by this council in December, we cannot go upwards from here. So we can pare down if the council decides that that's what you'd like to do. But whatever we submit into the county, we cannot go any higher when it comes time for December. So on, at the December 13th meeting, we'll have a final levy adoption and a public hearing. So overall, at this point, the general fund levy for 2022, we're proposing a 17.41% increase, which amounts to just north of $460,000 from the 2021 budget. There'll be some more details later, obviously, but again, just really high level. For a $206,000 house in the community, that would equate to about $300, $300 increase over the 2021 tax levy. We had to make, of course, several assumptions as, as any municipality or business, for that matter, would have to for 2022. Some of the more marketed assumptions would be for things that, numbers that we just don't have right now and we won't have for a period of time, including health insurance and our liability casualty property insurance and workers' comp insurance. We won't get those numbers, some of those we won't get until early 2022. So we're budgeting fairly conservatively at about a 10% increase for health insurance and liability insurance and 12% for workers' comp. And we can hope that they come in a little bit lower, but we want to be covered in case they don't. And, you know, the League of Minnesota Cities had suggested late last year that increases for 2021, they were anticipating some higher increases. So we wanted to throw in something that would, that would cover us. So when we get our numbers in first quarter of 2022, that we have the money budgeted in place. A couple of additional summary items here. So we look at, I'll start on the left-hand side with our capital, capital needs. When we look at, when we look at 2022 capital, we started, when we first started visiting with staff and kind of made a list of, I don't want to call them wish list items because they're, they're need-based items, right? These are items that the city requires. We started off with a list of about $1.6 million in capital needs for 2022. And through a series of conversations with Personnel and Budget, as well as with staff, we were able to pare that down to about $700,000. And that's $700,000 local cost, which, so for a number of our capital items, there is an overall cost. And then there's a local cost, which is what the city would actually incur. So there's one point, on the final capital list that we're presenting tonight is north of $1.3 million in total capital costs. The responsibility for the city would be $727,000 roughly. Most of that difference is in airport, in the airport capital, which the FAA covers much of that. So when we, we look at, say, you know, $500,000 on an airport item, just for example, we can frequently expect the FAA to reimburse a substantial portion of that. So the bulk of that $570,000 difference between total and local is the FAA's contribution to airport projects. Overall, for the general fund, which again is the, you know, the general government operations for the city, we're projecting a 10.78% decrease in overall expenditures. The community center, we are calling for a 39.01% increase and capital improvements, 105% increase year-over-year from 2021. For the community center, what that really means, and this is getting kind of to the right-hand side here, we're really looking for making up for missing membership dollars and revenues in the community center. From an operational expense standpoint, the community center is effectively flat with inflation year-to-year. We're looking at about a 5% increase in operational expenses, which can be tied entirely to, the bulk of it is in utility rates increasing year-to-year. But in the community center, we're really looking at a revenue shortfall. We're seeing it this year. And with anticipation of that continuing into 2022, there's, there would be an increase to the levy to make up for shortfall in revenue in the community center. So that would account for the bulk of that 39% increase year-to-year in the community center levy. The Highway 169 tax abatement, so in 2021, we're contributing $170,000 to that abatement fund, which we need to make whole by 2026. And as many of you recall, we're kind of playing catch-up there. There were several years when the city didn't contribute anything to that abatement fund. And in order to catch up from where we missed out in the past, we're suggesting a $185,000 contribution to the tax abatement in 2022 or a $15,000 year-to-year increase. And there have been a couple of questions on the American Rescue Plan, the ARPA funds through COVID relief. So the city is receiving overall a little over $400,000 revenue from the federal government. Well, it's federal government allocated to the state and then the state allocates it to cities, townships and counties. And so of that $400,000, we received $200,000 or thereabouts this year. And we've made the decision to make a recommendation to budget for the remaining $200,000 of revenue in 2022. We had, Jasper and I had a conversation with our audit team about the ARPA funds and whether it would be prudent to budget for those dollars in 2022 or not, seeing as, in my mind, it's, we don't normally budget for one-time money because you get that money. If you budget for it, then the following year, you don't have that money. You can't count on it anymore. And this is one-time money. However, because we're fairly confident that the money will be coming through, I mean, it's been promised to us. We're almost certain it'll come through, that in transparency, we should budget for it with the awareness that that $200,000 will not be there in 2023. And so when it comes to next year's budget, we will have a $200,000 revenue shortfall automatically because we won't have federal money coming in. So this should look familiar to anyone who's looked at the preliminary levy or the final levy, for that matter. This is a summary breakout of the citywide levy, broken out into the base levy, which is our general fund, the community center, capital improvement and our 169 abatement, followed by all of our debt service. So those are debt service that we include as part of our levy. Of course, we have some, the city has some debt that we don't levy for that comes through, whether it's the enterprise funds and dedicated revenues, things like that, or special assessments. But these are the debt service items that the city is obligated to pay in 2022 for which we levy. And then the EDA. So overall, if you look at the total base levy, we're looking at a 21.12% increase year-to-year, just shy of $442,000. And you can see that the bulk of that is in our Fund 420, which is our capital improvement. So I'm just going to pause there for a second on capital improvement because we talked about it a little bit. And I did hand out this little two-page sheet here, which shows the breakout of the capital improvement items. So in 2021, we budgeted $341,000 in capital and capital purchases across, across the city government, not, not counting the enterprise funds. And, you know, a lot of that was, the council at the time, you know, decided that we wanted to keep the levy as close to 0% increase year-to-year as possible. And I mean, when we look at budgeting, there are a few key levers that we can pull to really make a big difference in what our levy looks like. And capital is one of those. You know, what that means is we didn't budget as much this year, which means that the city wasn't, didn't do as much eating away at some of the capital improvement needs, specifically street improvements. We've seen a lot around town, obviously, with the CASA 22 work and the South Main work. But those were not capital levy items, right? Those are separate debt items that the city is used for funding those, those projects. But when we look at things like fog chip seal improvements that were done up in Green Acres, those dollars come out of our capital improvement plan. So when we, the more we fund the capital improvement plan, the more of those types of projects the city can afford to take on. And in 2021, the budget reflected a smaller list of capital items. Which doesn't mean, of course, they go away. It just means that we bumped them out to 2022 or 2023 or further, right? Depending on what, what the council decides to do. So as I mentioned a few minutes ago, when we started the capital list, we had about $1.6 million overall in projects. And went through that, a deep prioritization process where not everyone gets what they want. But we prioritize the needs of the city and, and take care of the things that need the most urgent work. And so we got that list down to, on your sheets, it's about $729,000. We would levy in this proposal, $700,000. The capital improvement fund will have a slight balance, fund balance at the end of this year. So we would utilize a $700,000 levy plus the remaining balance from 2021. It's about, we're projecting around $30,000 to cover the capital needs in 2022. It's a fund that you could put a million dollars into, right? Every year or $1.3 million into, to continue to move forward. But again, it's one of those significant levers that you can pull as a council to say, if we want to keep our levy at X percent. Not that it's an easy lever to pull, right? Because things get moved into the future, but it is a lever that can be pulled.
Another one would be the abatement fund.
Correct. And that's, you know, and that's why we're effectively trying to catch up with our abatement contributions. Because for, you know, several years, they're just, there wasn't any money put into the abatement fund. Because it's, it's, it's money that's set aside for future development of the highway, that the hilltop area on 169.
And how much time do you have left on that abatement?
Till 2026. And there's county, there's, the county is contributing money to that fund as well. And if we, if the city were to ever decide to stop contributing altogether and take that money back for another purpose, then we would lose the county's contributions to that fund. So we have some, not necessarily free money, but we have money from the county that can be used to develop that site at some point in the future. And by setting aside money now, it's less that we have to borrow in the future.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, can, let's speak upfront, that's a lot of money that would have to go back to the county.
Yes.
How much is it roughly?
I'll have to get back to you on that. I want to say it's 50,000, maybe $50,000 a year since 2008.
50,000 years since 2008. So it's a substantial pot of money that we would lose by putting this money in, we're making money.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's a matching savings plan.
More than that.
Yeah. So debt service, debt service is increasing just slightly. And again, that's, we're, that's debt that we're, the city is obligated to pay for prior projects. And we do have, for example, the 2021 A. You see, that's Fund 326. That's our water tower and Main Street, fire truck and snowplow, the bond that was just sold this past May. We make our first payment in 2022. The EDA levy, based upon taxable value within our city, that $66,800 is the maximum amount that the city can levy that is earmarked directly for the EDA. In 2021, that amount is 52,000. So we'd be looking at a $14,800 increase year-to-year in 2022. And overall, the very bottom there, that gets us to the 17.41% year-to-year levy increase for the city. Here's a broader picture of our impact on tax bill for the city. I do want, so the, the $206,000 is asterisked there. What I'd like to add there is that there's, there are a couple of conflicting pieces of data. The census data shows a different number than the county data. So we have, in the past, used this $206,000 figure. So from, from a consistency standpoint, we opted to continue with that. According to the census, the average home value is somewhere closer to $150,000. Jasper, if you'd like to speak to the discrepancy, I don't know truly that either of us understand it. But again, in the past, we've used the county's data for, for a comparison.
Yeah, I can, I can just add a little bit, if I may. Really, you have two different data sets. The census data is collected federally through the census and then make, they make adjustments accordingly each year. Whereas the county data, we're actually pulling that from the estimated market values that are on tax statements. So those numbers have, you know, shown an increase, I think, a little faster than the census. So I think that's the, that's the data that we've used or that number that 206 is what we've used in the past. That's what we recommend kind of looking at. We do have a wide breadth of, of values of homes from 125 to 350 on this table, just so that people can kind of look at it and say, okay, my house is 300,000. I paid $2,169 last year. It'll be 2608 this year, an increase of $439. So that, that median value of 206 is just kind of a, for consistency purposes.
Thanks, Jasper. So here's a breakout of expenditures, just to kind of give everyone an idea of what the expenditures in the general fund looked like from a 2021 budget standpoint versus the 2022 budget. And I'll just step through them really quickly. Most of them are relatively minor changes. Apparently, the mayor and city council aren't getting a big raise in 2022. But legal, I'll just speak to that really quickly, legal. So that's not, that's a separate bucket than our criminal prosecution. So the criminal attorney fees, legal fees sit within the police department budget. This would be for, if we need legal consultation for personnel matters, a lot of it is being utilized this year for things like planning and zoning, when we, we need to consult a lawyer. So we're seeing some increase in expenses in 2021 around that area. And so we want to budget a little bit more conservatively in 2022 to make sure that we capture all the anticipated expenses for legal.
So. One thing I wanted, can I add something, Joe? I just noticed on the bottom, you'll see a summation. That's incorrect. What that's doing is actually taking the summation of everything. So that number is basically double of what it actually is. The percentage is correct, but I'm just, I'm just looking at that. We added this extra column for the Personnel and Budget, wanted to, the yellow highlighted area was added. And that's actually taking that into the actual sum. So those numbers on the way bottom, you can divide those by two, and really the percentage is the same. So I just wanted to point that out if somebody's doing some quick math in front of them.
Yeah, thanks, Jasper. Yep. Thanks, Jasper. Apologies for that, everyone. So looking at the second section, the CIP allocation, Highway one sixty nine and debt service. Again, we've talked about this a little bit, but there's our you know, hundred and five percent increase year to year in CIP, going from three hundred and forty one thousand to seven hundred thousand dollars, our abatement, increasing fifteen thousand dollars. In the bottom section, their community center, looking at a five point six two percent increase year to year in in expenses with the fire department and airport seeing either decreases in case of the fire department or a marginal increase in the airport. Any questions here? I should have asked for questions before, but please jump in.
Anybody? Let let me, Joe, if I might, this is Councilmember Krugman speaking. A a number of things, I'll just tick down the list. Where are we? We have, we have a long range plan for roads, streets, sidewalks. How does this fit that in in terms of not just the dollars, but what we've been doing in the last few years and looking forward? And perhaps Jasper will want to answer that also. It's important because we were so far behind and we're, in effect, trying to catch up and look forward at the same time. So go ahead, please.
Yeah, I can, I can chime in a little bit here. And I think Councilmember Krugman, you're alluding to kind of the investment in our roads. And obviously, I think people can see around town over the last few years, we've really invested and and we're going to continue to do that. Funding the capital improvement plan that we've adopted, the 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 five year street maintenance and the ten ten year project list that we have. Really, we need to, we need to fund it and pay for it. Last year, we we took a little step back with with that goal of trying to, trying to maintain a zero percent levy, which was good last year. We 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 basically did that. But in order to continue the pace at what we're we're repairing roads, I'll call it deferred maintenance that that we're kind of addressing right now. You know, even with all the roads we've done in town, I think we've done, or we will have done after next year, somewhere like seven, seven or eight miles, seven miles of road. And that's that's significant for our community, but we're going to slow down a little bit because there's less county county partnerships. But it's important to keep up with it because what we, what we, what we had four years ago was was in pretty rough shape. And, you know, when I first started here, five years ago, that was the number one complaint that I that I received was was about the roads and the conditions of the roads. And really, it's a, I call it, it probably low hanging fruit as far as what people can see. You know, you see the project happening, you drive or you walk on the road or sidewalk. And it really benefits all. It's open to all. And, you know, we we really lately have heard good things about all the work we've done. So to continue that, it's really important to to continue to fund the CIP. As Joe talked, you know, we have, you know, quite a bit of need, you know, what about one point six million dollars is what we had in requests. Brought that down and kind of spread things out, reprioritized and 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 that kind of exercise to to just over seven hundred thousand. So I know Joe had handed out the the CIP, and there's another few slides that are coming up about that. Then we'll kind of go through that in detail as well. But yeah, those projects are are very important. And as you'll see in the the CIP for twenty twenty two, it's heavy on the the streets side again. So the other thing that we we really can move around a little bit is is the, you know, well, the community center or the Highway one sixty nine abatement, you know, we do have the ability to defer that if we choose, but just knowing that we'll, we'll have to make that up in the future and 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 kind of address that at that time. So really, the biggest one that that, you know, we'll call them levers is the CIP allocation. And continue to do what we've been doing as far as some of the improvements that you've seen around town. It's important to fund that, that that piece of the budget.
If I may continue, then the the next one, let's let's focus on the community center. Two, two areas to look at here. Let's be upfront and clear. When personnel and budget looked at this community center budget, this does not include the indoor pool. Am I, I want to make sure that's clearly understood.
That's correct. Can I jump in with a quick comment on that?
Please do.
Okay, so that's correct. So this, these expenditures effectively hold operations at the community center and outdoor pool consistent from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. So everything that's open and operational today would be open and operational in twenty twenty two. In order to open the indoor pool, which needs a new liner before we open it, we would plan eighty thousand dollars for the liner to to make the pool usable plus approximately two hundred thousand dollars in overall operational expenses to run the indoor pool. So if we look at adding two hundred and eighty thousand dollars conservatively to the budget in twenty twenty two to open the indoor pool, our levy, overall levy goes from a seventeen point four one percent increase to a twenty eight percent increase.
Thank you. Does Jasper have anything to say on that? I'm sorry. It's hard to tell because we can't see.
Yeah, yeah. The only thing I was going to add is if there is a desire by city council to do that, what what we would do is when we pass the the resolution, what we would do is we just change the the dollar amount of preliminary levy to reflect an additional two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And and that would, as Joe alluded to, would be about a twenty eight percent levy increase. So you know, there there is a a a task force for the community center, and there there have been some groups formed for the indoor pool. Obviously, some very passionate people about the indoor pool. And, you know, obviously, we're looking at this, I think, through the right lens, the financial lens and and, you know, really trying to make the best decision for the community. And and one of the other pieces of the puzzle is is in the CIP for the recreation side, there's a a proposed recreation facilities master plan. So looking at what amenities we offer the community, what amenities the community wants, and then and then forming a plan on how to provide those to the community in a fiscally, financially, financially responsible manner. So that's one piece that 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 fits into the puzzle of the community center and all the recreation amenities that we have in the community that we're proposing for twenty twenty two.
Let me continue then with the community center. We have an indication of a thirty nine percent roughly increase in cost from the levy, from the levy parts going up. Can we explain that one more time and talk about how much of that is expense? And how much of that is the loss of revenue because of declining membership?
So from an expense standpoint, it's roughly between five and six percent increase, and the remainder is revenue loss.
And why do we have a five or six percent? I'm not, I'm not arguing this. I think we need the public and we need to know why that is. What is involved?
Sure. So in the community center, looking at the community center expenses, the vast majority of the expense put into the community center is in people and utilities. So when we look at an average of five percent wage increase, and then in some areas of our community center spaces, we'll see a five percent or greater increase in utility expense driven in no small part by our proposed new electric rates, which would move the city into, out of the governmental category of electric rates and would be paying the rates consistent with other entities its own size. So that's your question.
It does. Thank you. Again, Jasper, once again, we can't see.
Yes, you can add if you'd like, Jasper.
Yeah, so I I like to use round numbers. So let's just say it's a two hundred thousand dollar increase. Roughly fifty of that is for additional expenses related to personnel and utilities. And the other hundred and fifty is is directly related to membership number revenue decreases. So really, the levy is is filling in that gap for that reduced membership and and that we're seeing from COVID or or compared to pre-COVID numbers to now. So and those memberships are slowly increasing, you know, but just not as fast as what we'd hope or like compared to what we what we had, you know, pre twenty or pre twenty twenty, you know, twenty nineteen numbers. So really, you know, seventy five percent of it's that two hundred thousand is related to revenues and and the lack thereof related to memberships. And then twenty five percent of that two hundred thousand is related to just general, call it kind of consumer price index increases, personnel increases, things like that.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go one step further and then I'll back off and please want others to ask questions if they have them. Part of my goal here is to make sure I understand it, that we here as a council do, but also that the public, who I'm sure may have a lot of questions about this process, gets a better understanding. So let, we know that this fall, we have a number of things happening. The county will have to establish its operating levy. The school will have two issues before the public in November. All of these things could wind up in increases to our average taxpayer. Well, to any taxpayer, then that'd be average, anybody. I'll ask Jasper and our finance director and Joe to address what what we can do about that, knowing that we don't set our levy actually until December. But first of all, has this been discussed at Personnel and Budget? I'll have you answer that. And then any thoughts that you might have about this? And I don't, Joe, I I I think we have to be, again, clear. You are a member of the school board, so if Jasper needs to answer these questions, please defer to him.
Sure.
Yeah, I can definitely answer, answer these questions. So we have gotten some information back from the the county. Their preliminary levy will likely be around seven point four percent. And then the the school, obviously, there's there's referendums that will be voted on here in in early November. You know, as far as the timing goes with that, city council can adjust things accordingly if they choose to. Really, with, you know, our preliminary levy, which which the public hearing and the and the adoption will be on the the thirteenth of December, we'll have about a month to kind of make a a game plan if we do want to make any changes based on the results of that referendum. So obviously, I think every year we've looked at at this as a as a kind of a community funding mechanism where, you know, we're looking at what the county prelim levy is and what the school increases are and things like that, to try to try to balance it out the best we can. And that's challenging because there's a lot of, lot of things going on that aren't, I'll call them normal, you know, inconsistent that that we've been dealing with over the last couple of years. So you know, know that we're trying to be consistent with with the way that we're approaching it, and we will have some time depending on the the outcome of the referendum. If if there's input that that comes from your constituents as a council member, then, you know, obviously, use that. We do have, we do have time, you know, this is the preliminary levy. We have, you know, two and a half months roughly to to really dial in the the final levy. And and if there's things that are happening in the community that that make us do that, we we definitely will 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 have to do that. So we do have some time. We are looking at those different components. So they, you know, there's a lot of things going on in the community right now.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I thank our staff members and the patience of other council members. I just thought these were areas we having been on the Personnel and Budget Committee, I thought these were issues that we need to bring to their other people's attention, not just ours. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to add that our Personnel and Budget Committee has put in a lot of time and and a lot of resources into these different projects, these different numbers. And it's been a challenge. It's been a challenge. It's been a real learning experience for myself and some of the new people on the Personnel and Budget Committee. What we're really dealing with is some enterprise funds that are we're suffering there. I mean, they're they're down. That that hurts our our revenue quite a bit. Membership at the community center being down. Costs going up. So the these are challenges that not not only our city has, but all of us have is in our own household. So we're we're trying to be sensitive to these things. But I want everybody to bear in mind, a lot of thought has gone into this, and and this is just a preliminary budget. So it's, we're not fixing anything tonight. But but with that said, I I just want to see if anybody's got any questions or any other comments to bring forth at this time. Anything for Mr. Roby? Anything for Mr. Krugel? Anything for Personnel and Budget at all? I, and Joe, are we done with your presentation? You got a few more things to cover here.
More slides.
Okay.
If you'll indulge me.
Please, please.
Thank you.
We tried to divert you, but you came back.
Yes, we we've got a couple of other things to discuss and and at the risk of, at the risk of going on ad nauseam about capital, it is really important. And 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 again, it's I I think one thing that I've seen, you know, directly throughout this process is staff's desire for council and the public to to see what we see in the interest of transparency. And I'm a taxpayer too, so I I want to know what I'm going to be paying myself. So with that being said, I want to take a look just here. This is again, in in front of each of you here, but this is our our capital plan, twenty twenty two through twenty twenty six. For, and this doesn't touch on the enterprise funds, our water, electric, wastewater, storm and and refuse, but this is all for our general fund. And so we look at administration. Again, each of these air larger buckets had requests in them that we have decided to move out into the future. So for example, administration, there was an item on here to do some work in in City Hall to create a couple of additional office spaces where we right now have some cubicle workspaces that's been on the CIP plan, I believe, for a number of years now. And it was on the initial request list. And in the interest of prioritization, it was moved out. The airport. So this is where you can really get a glimpse of the FAA's responsibility for some of these expenses. We've got three items in twenty twenty two, the North Taxi Lanes construction, crack repair and seal coat, and then some LED conversion of our runway edge lighting. Overall cost of six hundred and ninety some thousand dollars of which, or excuse me, six hundred and thirty some thousand dollars of which our responsibility is a little bit less than ten percent of that. The FAA ultimately covering the the remainder of that expense, which is great. Fire department and library have no items on the twenty twenty two capital list. Police, we're the the squads that we lease, we are seeing a slight increase in our squad lease prices. We just got some in fact, just on Friday, received some new pricing for the the squads that we lease from the state of Minnesota. All those, all of our squads are leased from the state. We don't purchase any of them outright. And so that expense, as you can see, is a recurring expense year to year for the squads that we have in-house. And then the, and I I know for the Personnel Budget Committee, this is, this is old hacks. We've discussed this, but the Exxon squad cameras and microphones, the the squad camera system that the police have right now is grossly outdated, is no longer supportable. Could only maybe get some very, very ineffective aftermarket products. So from a security standpoint, really need to make some upgrades there. So so the recommendation would be to include squad cameras and microphones, which then integrate with the body cameras that the the police officers wear, which would be a a significant upgrade for the safety of our community. In Public Works, this is this is where, as Jasper mentioned, the bulk of our we see the bulk of our capital requests, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in annual street maintenance. A portion of that, two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars would be bitted projects. So where the city will actually go out and bid for work, such as the crack chip seal that was done. Again, that was a bitted project. And then hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for materials primarily that then our own Public Works team would complete. Public Works Facilities Maintenance Park mower program that was developed a couple of years ago where the city levies capital dollars a small amount every year, so that when we need to replace a mower, which we need to at this point in twenty twenty two, we have some funds that we can use to contribute to to a new mower. A skid, skid loader replacement less the trade in value, a backup loader, which the the budget for this in the general fund would be thirty three thousand dollars. This is actually going to be split. The expense for this will be split between electric, stormwater, and the general fund because electric, electric department will use it. Water wastewater can use it for to support our stormwater system, and then our Public Works team can use it as well. And let's see, Kingsway pedestrian crossing signage. So this is a Kingsway near the Kingsway Peck intersection where our trail, our northbound Kingsway Trail ends at the edge of Peck, near the cemetery. And then we direct users or pedestrians to cross Kingsway. And then we direct users or pedestrians to cross Kingsway to continue on down Dakota. There's no signage there right now for, so from a safety standpoint, we'd like to install some solar signage to create a safer intersection there. And the hope would be that we'd be able to utilize some grant funding as well to defray some of the cost for this. And then trail lights pre, pre-treatment system. So two things, one, we've, you know, increased our trail system in the past 12 months, which is great. And the hope would be that we could put $5,000 into pre-treating this for, for winter use. Again, to, to create safer walking conditions for pedestrians and also hopefully with some pre-treatment. Increase the, the lifespan of those trails.
Oh, real quick.
Yes.
Mr. Roby, the Kingsway Trail Pedestrian Cross, that's 16,000. That is a contingent.
That's correct. Yes, thank you. That, that would be contingent upon us receiving some grant funding to, to support that. Thank you. And recreation, this is community center and outdoor pool. So as Jasper referred to the, earlier, the master plan, we've proposed $40,000 here for an overall look at what we provide in the city for recreation with the goal of having a clear picture with potentially recommendations for council to look at for what the future of recreation in the, in the city looks like. And how that compares to, to where we are right now between our community center and our outdoor pool. Certainly utilizing some of the previous plans that were done, both for the, the overall comp plan for the city as well as, you know, our parks plan. Integrating those into this to really build, help build a vision for what the future of the community center and outdoor pool look like. $3,500 for an Olympic weight platform. That's seen as ultimately a cost-saving measure when we have free weights that are dropping out of the floor, cracking tiles, things like that. This platform will really help save the flooring in the fitness area. Some items here in, in the ice arena, $10,000 for coolant. There was a slight leak in the coolant system and so we anticipate or budgeting for some coolant in the event that we have, have to recharge the system. Some acoustic panels, some of these things with the ice arena, the city partners with the hockey association. So the acoustic panels, as you can see there in parentheses, the local share for that would be roughly $5,000. If we can work with our partners to secure those. There were some want items at the outdoor pool. But we, the three items you can see here, the caulking, media filtering, gutter grate, those are really needs if we want to keep the outdoor pool open in 2022. Those projects have to be done to make the pool usable. And so what we get to is at the bottom, $1.3 million in overall capital projects. Of that, 726 904 would be our local cost, which you remember, among the millions of numbers that you've seen so far tonight, that 726 904 was referenced early on. That's our local share, $700,000 of that would be from the 2022 levy and 26,904 coming from the fund balance in the capital fund that we anticipate having at the end of this year. So again, by September 30th, we have to file with the county a preliminary levy. The recommendation from staff and PBC is that council would approve a resolution for this proposed preliminary levy, adopting the preliminary levy at $3.1 million for 2022. And unless you have anything else to add, Jasper, I think that concludes.
Your presentation.
My portion.
Thank you, Mr. Roby. That's very good presentation, by the way. You've come a long ways in a few short months. So thank you for your, your time and, and everything you've put into this. Mr. Krugel, do you have anything else you want to add?
I do not. If there are any questions, yeah, Joe and I are here to help.
Any, anybody at all? Any questions, comments, concerns before we, I asked for a motion?
I just wanted to verify, this is a ceiling. We can't go above this from here on out, correct?
That's correct.
So if we adopt this proposal, it would guarantee the indoor pool would not open.
Well, we, we can't go any higher with the levy. So I, I think we would kind of solidify our, yeah, our, our future with the indoor pool. Is that what you asked or outdoor, indoor?
Mr. Mayor, we, we could open that pool. We'd have to figure out how to do it within that dollar amount total. We'd have to take away from something else to be able to do it. It wouldn't be impossible.
Might be the CIP, it might be, yeah.
So what is the plan for that space?
Well, you know, it's a good question. We, we've got a task force working on that right now, but for right now, there is, there is no plan.
We're kind of handcuffing them.
We're, we're kind of at a catch 22. I mean, if, if we had more membership and more people buying memberships, it would make this a little easier. But it's hard to entice people when the pool's closed. So it's, it's, it's kind of like I said, a catch 22. Nobody wants to see this pool open more than I do or the rest of the council, I'm sure. But this is kind of a bare bones budget we're looking at. The CIP does not, you know, the, the community center budget does not include the, the pool being open. You kind of heard the reports. Can you review those again, Joe? It'd be another 200,000 or 280,000, which would make a difference of about?
About 10%.
Of the budget.
Of the, well, we go from 17% proposed levy increase to 28%.
And to what that boils down to, let's, let's make it kind of simple for like a $200,000 home. What are we kind of looking at as far as an expense? And bear in mind, this, this is going to cost the average taxpayer with a $200,000 home to open the pool. I'm just guessing right now, maybe another 20, $25 a month.
Yeah, let me, I'll.
And what we want to do is, is, you know, if we do this, we, we've got to justify what we're doing for everybody. It can't be just, just for a few. It's, I would like to, I would love to see the pool open. And like I said, it'll stimulate more membership, but we've, we've got to kind of balance this out. So the translation on that, do you have?
Sure. So we'll be looking at, if we went back to that $206,000 average market value, we'd be looking at a $38, $38.50 a month versus $25. So $13 more a month for the average household to open the pool.
What's your thoughts, Dave? I mean, I mean, let's be frank with each other. I, I, I mean.
It bothers me that there's no plan for that space. That's a problem for me. I understand the financial implication, but then what?
Right.
And I know there's a task force working on it, but it doesn't coincide with what we're doing tonight.
It doesn't, no.
It should have been done before.
So.
So it was my understanding that the indoor pool never cash flowed. Is that true?
There's a lot of entities that don't cash flow. I don't want to get into them. I mean, we, you know, and, but they're important things to have. The library is important to have. The police department's important to have, but they don't cash flow. The, the community center to, to enhance membership, it's the more, the more activities you have there, the easier it is to sell it. Yes. There, there's, there's quite a bit of a compensation package that comes from the, from the city to keep that community center open. Not just the pool, but everything that goes on there.
The facility.
Some, some items cash flow better than others. I mean, the hockey, the hockey's program's much, much better cash flowing that area over there in the hockey arena. You know, the, the weight room, the fitness room cash flows better than the, than the pool. But the pool gets used by, by a lot of different programs with our elderly. There's a lot of therapy programs that go with it. There's a lot of recreational programs that go with it. It's, it's an important piece to have. So I, I'm just kind of asking everybody how they feel tonight and, and how we move forward from here.
So if, if I, if I may, Councilmember Swanberg, just on the, the plan piece of it. For me, looking at these numbers, that's where the, the $40,000 capital earmark for a master plan for the community center. In, as far as bang for your buck, from where I'm sitting, I see that as maybe the most important $40,000 that we can put into the community center next year is having an outs, an outside firm come in and say, this is what the task force has discussed. These have been your numbers, membership numbers, expense numbers, revenue numbers over the past X number of years. This is where population's expected to go. Here's where your overall target market is. Here's what similar sized communities have done and have that done in 2022. So that when we're sitting here in, for 2023 budget cycle, we might at least have, you know, ideally we'd have some results of that. So we could then look forward to 2023 and say, this is what we'd like to see for the next 20 years. That's just where I'm sitting from a numbers standpoint, as far as just addressing the, what the plan is for that space long-term. It doesn't address the plan for 2022, understand?
I mean, there, there always is the, the piece where we, you know, go back to the, the CIP and maybe pull a little back from there and, and, and move that towards, towards the indoor pool, but then, but then we're going to suffer with some of the improvements and some of the needs that the city has right now. So.
Well, when you're talking about needs and stuff like that, I see like $70,000 for the skid loader in the backhoe. What's wrong with those items? Curiosity.
So the.
You said we needed a new mower too. I, I'm just curious what's wrong with all them things.
So the mower has, and Rich, you can correct me if I'm wrong, 5,000 hours, over 5,000 hours on, on the mower?
And?
Rich, would you care to?
Yeah. I know. And that's what I'm wondering. That's all I'm asking.
Yep.
No, that's what, that's what we're trying, you know, we're trying to balance when is the breaking point.
Yeah, the mic.
Yep. Rich, could you step to the mic, please? Thanks.
Otherwise the public won't hear.
Yeah.
Does that work? Okay. Currently we don't have a rubber tire backhoe loader. We have a Volvo payloader that only is used to load salt sand in the wintertime. Other than that, it sits in the shop. This piece we couldn't, like Joe brought up, could then be used by multiple departments and be used all year long instead of just being used in one season.
So you're trying to buy an O1 loader?
No, we would be trading in the O1 payloaders.
Okay, okay.
Set anymore?
Some sense, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Lozey. Any other questions? Mr. Kachera, Mr. Roby? This, Mr. Krugel, anything? Bear in mind, this is, this is still a preliminary levy. We can still examine moving some funds around and, and exploring other options as far as revenues to, to reopen that pool yet next year. But Dave, I, I appreciate the challenge on that. I, I couldn't agree with you more. That's, it's an important entity and to, to have open. And it's a big, big part of that community center. And if we want to sell the community center, if we want to market the community center, we, we've got to figure out a way to get that pool open. Anybody else? Moving on to the motion that we were going to have, can you pull that back, Joe? I think at this time, I would like to entertain a motion approving resolution R 2021-035. The 2022 proposed primary levy, adopting a preliminary levy amount of $3,106,936.
Mr. Mayor, I will so move.
Thank you, Mr. Krogman.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lozey. Any other discussion, thoughts, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on. Moving into the council member resignation, we got a resignation from Ms. Mahoney. We, we appreciate your work with the city council that you've, you've devoted some time and good effort with us in these past few months. And we just want to let you know that we appreciate that. So that said, we're going to move forward with where we go from here and missing my sheet for that. Oh, here we go. Tonight, what we're going to do is declare your seat, Ms. Mahoney vacant. And we, we will accept your resignation with a vote a little later. And at this time, we'll then, we'll then explore how we go about appointing a, a new council member for your seat. So the, the first step we need to do is declare the, the vacancy through the city council. We will then solicit applications to fill these, this vacancy. And then we'll evaluate and interview any potential candidates to fill the vacancy at a public meeting. So you've got a, in front of you, kind of a timeline on how we're going to, how things will proceed from here. September 13th, which is tonight, we're going to declare this vacancy open. And as we will post it September 14th, it'll be posted through the 6th of October and we'll solicit and collect applications to fill the vacancy, your city council seat. October 25th, potential second interview dates would be considered at a, at a council meeting, November 8th. Council would then be the first city council meeting for the new member to assist this council. So with that said, staff is recommending that the city council accept Ms. Leah Mahoney's resignation from the city council effective September 14th, 2020 and approve resolution R 2021-036 to clearing the vacancy on city council and approving the process to fill the vacancy on the city council. These items can be combined as one motion or completed individually. So with that said, before we proceeding further, Administrator Krugel, you have anything to add?
I do not. You covered it, covered it well. One, one kind of just logistic piece with the, with the applications and interview process. The idea is that if we get, you know, five or less applications by the, by the 6th of October, we'll invite all five of those to come to that meeting in, in person on the 11th. Work with personnel and budget to develop the questions that, that will be asked to those interviewees. If there's more than five, I think it would be appropriate to evaluate just the applications themselves as a council, then invite a, a certain number back to that October 25th meeting. Just for the, the sake of time, some of those, you know, to interview, you know, let's say seven or eight people at one city council meetings, quite kind, time consuming. And, and that, that would be the plan. So we'll, we'll see what we get for applications. We're going to be meeting with the personnel and budget numerous times between now and then as well. So we'll, we'll keep them up to speed as far as, you know, how many applications we've received. So that's just one nuance with the process that I wanted to make sure was clear. Depending on the applicants, that's why there's two interview dates as opposed to just one.
And I, I just want to also add that this, this whole process was reviewed by our personnel and budget committee. And it's in compliance with the charter commission. And so we're going to kind of ask that we move ahead with, with the recommendations with our charter commission and the personnel and budget committee. Any comments before we?
Mr. Mayor, I think there are two motions to be made. We can combine them, but we have to be careful. It's not just the resolution. We also need to approve the plan. Is that correct, correct, Mr. Krugel?
Yes, sir. That is it. So on this next slide, you can see action requested. There's actually potentially three motions that we could look at. One is accepting the resignation. The next motion is approving the resolution. And then the third motion would be approving the process to fill the vacancy.
Thank you. That makes it a little more clear. So let's start with the first motion. First motion would be accepting the resignation of Ms. Leah Mahoney, our councilperson for the last several months from the, the Sore City Council. All those in favor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We'll back up. Thank you. We need a motion first.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Swanberg. Mr. Lozey seconded. Any comments, concerns, questions? Otherwise, all those in favor? Thank you, Mr. Swanberg. Mr. Lowes seconded. Any comments, concerns, questions? Otherwise, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Thank you.
Yep.
And it is with regret. Thank you. Well said, Mr. Swanberg. Motion to approve resolution R 2021 dash zero three six declaring a vacancy on the City Council. It's been Mr. Sullivan. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lowes. So moved. Mr. Sullivan seconded. Any discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The eyes have it. And lastly, motion approving the process to fill the vacancy on the City Council. Motion, anybody?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Lowes. Seconded.
Second.
Mr. Sullivan, thank you. Any discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? All those, anybody opposed? Thank you. Lastly, comments, reports, items of appreciation. Council members, this is your platform. This is your time to share whether there's any commission reports, committee reports you might have, or any community information you want to share with our community. So we'll start with Councilmember Krogman.
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Wow, thank you. Councilmember Lowes. Thank you. Councilmember Mahoney, I would hope you have something to share with us.
No, not really a whole lot. Our PAC meeting, members will begin re-reviewing the Parks Trail Open Spaces Master Plan and try to come up with a list of priority areas that they want to focus on. Um, recently or in recent years, applying for grants has kind of been sporadic. So there wants to be more strategic planning when they're going after funding. So hopefully there can be some success in that. Um, a master tree plan should be coming to board soon for approval and then Planning Commission was canceled for this past month.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to thank you for your service on this City Council. I know it was short, but it was all, it was all good and we appreciate everything you did for us.
Thank you.
We want to wish you well. You're going to New Prague.
Yes.
Beautiful community. We're going to miss you. Moving on to Councilmember Schleter.
HRA, the Director Position, the person we were going to interview, accepted another job. We, there was an interview of a second candidate and currently there's a background check being done. I'll know more at the meeting on Wednesday.
Thank you, Mr. Schleter. Moving on to Mr. Sullivan.
Uh, just got a transit meeting. Councilmember Swanberg and myself have a transit meeting tomorrow at 2:30. And then thanks, Leah, for your time.
Thank you. Councilmember Swanberg?
One of us won't be there. Yeah, just again, thanks to Leah. Wish you the best and thank you for your time on the council.
Thank you. I think everything's been said. And again, I want to say for the last time, Ms. Mahoney, we're going to miss you on the council and I want to wish you well with everything. And I want to thank our city administrator for his good work and we want to wish you luck as we move forward here. You are at home because we're on baby watch and I'm going to end the evening with anything you might want to add, Mr. Krugel.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor Kirby. Yeah, we're just patiently waiting now. The only thing I really have to say is, is there's a, there's a community survey link floating around on social media right now. We're going to continue to, to, to market that. And really that's the, the Planning Commission is gathering some information for that future of the city forum that we hope to hold next, next spring. So if you see the link and you haven't filled it out yet, definitely do that. It's on social media. Our Communications Director has talked me into doing a video for that. So you'll get to see that on, on social media here shortly, I hope. So fill out that link, you know, be honest. A lot of good information we've gathered so far. I think we've gotten around two hundred and twenty respondents. So pretty good turnout so far and, and it helps guide us on, on what we're doing and, and provides, you know, input to, to city staff and City Council and the boards and commission. So that's all I have.
Thank you very.
Mr. Mayor, fine man.
Yeah.
Jasper, I tried to find that link on our website and it's not there. If it is, it's not discoverable. Social media is an assumption that everybody has it. Not everyone does. Not everyone has access to internet either, but most do. Could we please have that put on our website so that the public can get to it? So if you're going to go look for it, that's where you'd go. You wouldn't go to social media.
Yep, definitely, definitely. I'll make a note and we'll get that added.
Thank you. With that said, I'll entertain any motions to adjourn this meeting. All I'm going to do is entertain a motion. We're not going to second it or anything. Anybody?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Lowes. All those in favor? Thank you.